...treat to council and mayor. May 1st, in city council meeting, we did introduce the budget to the public as required by state rule and state law, and it was a balanced budget. May 29th, we had another work session to discuss a few more items of concerns, and on June 15th, which was last Friday, we emailed you all the corrections and the updated budget request. Couple of key items to follow up with. One of them, we talked about reclassification of a Publix facility superintendent. I just want you to know, talking with both attorneys and myself, we feel like at this time to leave the classification alone and note that upon retirement of this individual, the reclassification will be made to take this position from a public facility superintendent to an equipment operator one with a considerable amount of savings. We feel like that's just the best method at this time. Number two, the electrician. The electrician, so we hired the electrician as adjournment electrician in 2014. He is current job description in that position is an equipment operator two. I believe to clean that up, he should be labeled as what he is, what he was hired for, and what his duties and responsibilities are to reflect his actual duties. There is no fiscal increase to the general budget. The IT department, we feel these changes will have a very favorable impact to the city to include, we will have a supervisor position that will see a 5% increase as this is a promotion. With the retirement of our second IT position later this month and dropping the second IT position to a tech position will lower the salary range, and for next year's budget, we'll see a decrease of $33,000. So that's a good thing. So those were the, those were the big questions involved. We brought you a balanced budget, and remember, the city manager and staff, our role is to bring you a budget that we feel like is a good budget for the city, that meets the city's needs, and there it is. So we're willing to entertain any questions that anybody may have.
Good rundown. Anybody would like to make comment? We're in the public opening, Publix hearing, so please, if you have a comment you'd like to make, step up to the mic, and all we need is your name and address.
Mayor, if I may, before we get there, I got a suggestion that I'd also like to hear the comments from the public on.
Great budget, Jason. You and your staff did a great job personnel-wise. Everything's good. I don't see any issues or problem with that. The only one topic that comes to talk about is the ice rink, which costs, you know, three, a little over $300,000. But we do have grant money from Ramp for five years. This is year three. So I'd like to just make this suggestion. We have other needs that we saw as a priority. Part of that is the chiller here. This building will cost $90,000. I'd say we take $90,000 of that money to pay for the chiller, and then we have approximately, the rest $200,000 would go to buying the meter readers that we are way behind on, five-year plan. But that's something we committed to, we wanted to get done, and talking with Ross, I think we can get that done, accomplish it this year. But with the understanding, the rink is not off the table. It is still there. For the next two years, we will go out and try to find some sponsorship for that to make sure that that does happen, a follow-through with what we said we do. So just a thought and a suggestion to throw out, and I'd like to hear comments if anybody has a comment on that, Mayor.
Comments? Thank you. Okay? Just your name and address. Thank you.
My name's Jody Fusselman, and my address is 50, well, my address is in Syracuse, but I'm up here for Public Works, so it's 5460 South, 2700 West, most of the time. I am standing up here to read the following statement on behalf of the Public Works. It has been brought to our attention that a few of you do not care about the city employees. You feel that we did not deserve promotions. In the May 29th budget workshop, it was your concern, Mayor, that if we give promotions, there would be all supervisors and nobody turning the wrenches. Each of the divisions in Public Works Department has a foreman, with the exception of building maintenance. I have made each of you a copy of the street water and water foreman job descriptions, and also one of the building maintenance foreman. There is a position for the foreman, it's just never been filled. From what I understand, when listening to the budget workshop, it is your belief that the foreman should supervise, nothing else. When you get a chance, I encourage you to read the foreman duties that I have given you, and you will see that the Public Works foremans are working foremans. They are not just supervising foremans. The foreman for the Streets Division has saved the city tens of thousands of dollars doing concrete work. He has installed hundreds of streetlight bases throughout the city. We recently hired out a company to pour nine bases, just nine, and it cost $2,000 per base. He has poured curb, gutter, and sidewalk throughout the entire city. In the budget workshop, around minute 47, you say, "In my eye, you got a $60,000 foreman who's basically doing the labor of a $30,000 laborer." We just want to set the record straight that not one of our foremans makes $60,000 a year. We also do not have one foreman who stands around and supervises. They all, as you say, turn wrenches. There are 120 miles of road in Roy City, 230 miles of curb, gutter, and sidewalk, all of which the Street Division maintains and plows. There is close to 200 miles of culinary water line and 200 miles of sewer pipe that the Water Division maintains, in addition to the approximate 10,500 residential and commercial meters that they read and maintain. The shop maintains 200 vehicles and pieces of equipment. There are 12 different buildings in this city that we own that require building maintenance to do a lot of different repairs and preventative maintenance, in addition to cleaning. There are 96 miles of storm drain line that must be maintained by the Storm Division, the Storm Drain Division, and that is in addition to all of their M.O. list, which is two pages, and does take all summer long to rotate through. Each of these departments needs a superintendent, foreman, lead man, and operators, and each of these employees is on call 24/7. We, as citizens and employees, are on Facebook. We see what is written about us by the small majority of citizens. We see the comments stating that we are all lazy, crappy workers, et cetera. We also see the comments from people that represent us. We see your negative comments agreeing with the Facebook people. We ask that you please, in the future, remember that many of us are residents as well as employees. We understand that your priority is the citizens before anything else, but you need to remember that we all have the same goal. We are here to serve the community. We want Roy City to be the best that it can be. We would like to invite you to come out at 4:00 in the morning when the temperature is four below zero, and our guys are out fixing a water main break. Please come with us on Christmas Day and riding the plow with our guys who are just trying to make the streets safer for travel while the citizens yell profanities and flip them off. When it's pouring rain, we ask that you drive the entire city, making sure storm drains aren't blocked so homes don't flood. When the garage door at the fire station won't close in the middle of the night, we ask that you take the call to fix it because it can't be left open. My grandma moved to Roy in 1952 and is one of the longest residing citizens in the city. My mom was and still is a proud Royal. Three out of four of the members of my immediate family work for this great city. Public Works would like to applaud Jason for the amazing job that he has done as city manager. He has gone above and beyond to boost the morale of the employees. We would also like to thank the council members that have supported us and continue to support us as employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else like to step up? Okay. Those are great comments. Maybe in light of the fact, oh, excuse me. Name and, name and address. Thank you.
Thank you. Brent Saxton, 5710 South, 2250 West. Councilman Tofoya, did I understand your comment that you would table the ice rink for this fiscal year and look for a private sponsor?
It's just not, yes, it's not off the table forever, but just for this year, because our priorities list is to take care of the water meters. And staff would continue to go out and help find sponsorships to help pay for that.
Okay. I appreciate you bringing the topic up. I think it's ill-advised, even with Ramp money. We all pay tax into that Ramp money, too. That's part of our tax base, and the citizens of Roy bear that, part of that tax base. Logan City used to have an outdoor rink, and with climate change and the warming winters, and you can't deny that that's not happening, they've had to abandon their outdoor rink. 20 years ago, when I was on the council, we talked about the complex, and it was such a drain on our general budget that we explored ways to get to privatize the complex at the time. Nothing ever happened on that. I foresee an ice rink that you'd use maybe three months out of the year at most, but probably not that, and then you'd have to pay a maintenance fee and upkeep on it for the other nine months. I propose that that also would be a drain on the general fund, and that most residents of Roy would not find a use in that ice rink. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Stuart?
Hello. Stuart Hackworth, 5561 South, 4100 West. I just kind of wanted to share my feelings as a Roy resident. The information I have is that there hasn't been a budget increase in, I don't know, how long has it been? 20, is it 20 years? Is that, is that accurate?
Help me understand. Budget increase meeting is in reference to having revenue come in in terms of our...
Taxes.
Yeah. It was actually 13, two years ago was 13 years prior to that, so we've only had one in the last 15 years.
Now, as somebody that isn't, doesn't like paying a lot of taxes, do you believe that that is a responsible way to govern? And I don't want to pay taxes any more than anybody does, but I know that, you know, inflation and everything, it does increase. And my opinion is that unfortunately, the inability or the lack of action from the governments, the government the last long while, and I know that there's been different thought processes, and things get voted in, and things get voted out, or approved and not approved. I'm not sure that going that long without adjusting for the growth of the city. I work for the police department. We have, you know, actually two less officers now than we did years ago, and with the apartments and the growth of the city, in my estimation, I haven't done a formal numbers count, but we're far below the national average. Now, with that being said, as far as the tax increase goes, I think that it's unfortunate that because of the lack of action on the previous, the previous governments, it falls on you guys to make a hard decision. And when, when we voted, we voted for people that we think would make those hard decisions. And some, it might not be popular with some, but sometimes the right decision isn't always the easiest. And I think when looking at whether or not to proceed as was voted, there's a reason for that. And it's going to be, it's going to be a hard decision, but I think, I know that most of us in here know what the right decision is. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else would like to make comment? Thank you.
Randy Scadden, 4433 South, 1800 West. Thank you, Councilman Tofoya, for at least putting, kicking the can down the road as far as the ice rink is concerned. As the father of three, we consistently have a topic of conversation in our house of our wants versus our needs. In Roy, for whatever reason, it seems like somebody wants an ice rink, but from a needs perspective, we don't need an ice rink. We will be, regardless of whether we spend the money this year, next year, or in year five, it's still going to be money that we specifically have to come out of the, out of the general budget specifically to bring the ice rink to fruition. So I guess from that perspective, if there was truly a need with Utah being the free-market economy that it is, somebody would have already come in and taken and put in an ice rink. We have a room completely and totally full of law enforcement professionals, of public safety officials, and that's the thing, because I didn't realize we're down two police officers. If that's the case, with our continued increase in population, I would urge the council to take a look at that money that was earmarked specifically for the ice rink and bring in more public safety and police officers and fire, fire, what's your guys' official term?
Fire safety.
It's public safety.
Public safety.
Public safety, yeah. More public safety professionals specifically to take and protect us as citizens. And so from that perspective, we need those types of individuals, and we also need businesses to also come in. And so with that also in mind, I, as they were going through the budget process, I don't recall there being any type of specific line item. I know we have a business development representative, but we don't have any type of fund specifically slated for marketing. And from that perspective, I know Councilwoman Morell has very deep ties into Roy High, and I guess the suggestion that I would take and make is take some of that money that we are also looking for the ice rink, and let's go out and let's market Roy. People don't, it's interesting. I commute to Draper, Utah every day, and if I get, if I turned around and asked everybody how long it takes to get to Draper from Roy, Utah, everybody would be like, "Oh, God, that's got to be like an hour and a half, two hours." No, it is literally 47 minutes from my front doorstep to my office in Draper, which is literally right across the street from the, from the prison, four points of reference. And so from that perspective, I don't think Roy City is doing a good job going out and marketing ourselves as, if we're going to continue to be a bedroom community, let's go out and get the professionals that are down in Salt Lake that could go to Lehigh that, that exact same commute is the, it takes that much more time. And again, if you take and you ask somebody, "How long does it take to get from here to the Salt Lake Airport?" And most people would be like, "Oh, God, that's at least an hour." No, it's 32 minutes. And so from that perspective, I envision doing some type of public-private, you know, partnership where we take and we provide people that are already within our, within our city, specifically a marketing student at Roy High. Let's put together a scholarship fund, and we do that every year. And then they come out and they basically come out and market it. I envision them taking a drone and flying it over George Wallen Park and showing the new splash pad that's going to be in by the end of the summer. They take and they, they highlight how, how many citizens we actually have, because that's another thing that people don't realize is, we're the second highest populated city in Weber County right now, and there's just this misconception that we are kind of, we get a black eye by being in close relation to Ogden. Trust me, I know, I have, my in-laws live in West Jordan, and anytime there's anything that happens in Ogden, they're like, "Oh, how close is that to your house?" And so from that perspective, I would just say, we need to do a better job taking and marketing Roy. And if we've got the money for the ice rink, let's take and reinvest that into our students at Roy High and provide scholarship funds. And with that, I would just like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Okay. Anybody else would like to make comment? Okay. Oh, okay. Pat? Name and address?
My name is John Patterson. I'm 3830 West, 5850 South in Roy. I am a little behind the power curve as far as having all the information I need to have, because I read the paper when I walked in the house this afternoon and saw an article about an ice rink. I've heard all of the people who ran for office talking about tax money, the problems we have. We don't have enough sources of incoming funds from businesses in our community, and we're willing to spend close to a half a million of tax dollars, no matter where they come from, they're our tax dollars, to put in an ice rink, which doesn't provide us a year-round facility, doesn't provide us any, any of the things that could cause it to be a huge success. We've got a great ice rink very close by that can be accessed and used. Knowing what the weather is and not knowing what the systems are to create the ice in this rink, I know that if it's to even freeze water that can be skated upon, it's going to have to have a system to create the ice. And I know the cost of that is very high. The maintenance of it is even higher and continual, and for that program to be a success, sounds to me like happened to us before in this city, when facilities that were being used were converted into parking lots. I'm now referring to the arena we used to have in the, in the park out to the west. The reason was is because the community was changing, and I don't think that people change much. The community might have some different uses. But I feel that this is a very poor use of tax dollars, and if we can't find something better to do with it, we still shouldn't spend it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anybody else like to make comment? Okay. Having seen none, I have a motion to go out of public hearing.
I'll make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed?
Aye.
There's Joe on the back. Counsel, comments? We've got some interesting comments that took place. I think Jason would like to make a comment.
Yeah. If I can address Mr. Scadden's, couple of his comments. Where did Mr. Scadden go? Okay. So since basically January, we have created a very aggressive, business-friendly group. And I can tell you, because I'm part of that committee, the mayor's also on it, Councilmember Saxton, Councilmember Paul, and then we have a RDA specialist that's supposed to be one of the best in the state that we've contracted with. And I can tell you and all the residents and the employees, it's a very active committee. We have a lot of good things, I think, going right now, and we have a lot of momentum. So we are, and I agree with you, and I think the rest of the committee, and I probably would say the employees would agree with you, too, we've seen it like this way for a long time, and there needs to be some change. And I can just say that I feel like that change is happening, and we are moving in a good direction. Your first comment about maybe needing more police officers, when we went into this, this retreat with, with all the department directors, we looked at what are our three priorities? Number one, employees were our number one priority. George Wallen North Park, number two, and number three are water meters. So if, we're trying to, to work those top three, and, and I'm surprised with Councilmember Tofoya on moving that, but I guess that's a direction that we're, and we're not doing the, it sounds like, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, sorry.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna surely discuss it.
So I'm new, so being new maybe gives me a little leniency, but it sounds like we're trying to do those priorities. Finish up a couple of things that we need to be done before going out and doing something different. So just, I just want to address you on that.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel?
Hey, Jason.
Yes.
While you're talking, I'd like your thought on the ice skating rink.
My thoughts on the ice skating rink haven't changed since our March 13th and 14th department directors' priorities. The ice skating rink was not a huge priority. It was the other three that I had listed.
Okay. In light of that, let me just make a comment, and I do appreciate the comments. Sometimes it's hard not to have the continuity, okay, of what's taking place. But I think as your mayor, I owe it to you to explain my position and at least understand where I'm coming from. First thing is, and it's important to understand this, the responsibility of the council should be first to the residents who elected them. Second, to the employees that basically they work with, and then last, in my opinion, to the council. That allows us to be independent thinkers and basically make judgment, and hopefully, collectively, the majority will make the right judgment for this city. The challenge we have in Roy City that is not unlike other cities right now, except Riverdale and Clinton and a few other ones like Leyton, and you surely see it happening in Ogden, is the fact is, is that Roy, much like other cities we're seeing on the Wasatch Front, are becoming constrained in terms of revenue income. There are only three revenue streams into the city. Property tax, franchise tax, and unfortunately or unfortunately, sales tax. And every one of those taxes that I just mentioned to you in Roy City, and the data is really clear, read the budget, it basically says we are flatlined. Now, we're doing some interesting things to fix that, but they are flatlined. And yet the expenses that we committed to, me as a city council member and this council says that we're going to take care of our employees, and you know what that means? A 2.5% and a 3.75% merit rate every year. Now, let me make you put that in perspective. Just to get us whole, we took a million dollars, read the budget, and we basically took a million dollars and put it to employee pay. And if you look at the numbers in the budget right now, we went 10% increase from last budget to this budget in people, pay, and benefits. It's in the record. That's a 10% increase. Fundamentally, if you look at the numbers, 76% of the general fund budget goes to pay for our employees, and it's about time. If we keep on this path, and all indications are, we will stay on this path, we could see a 10% increase every year. And in three years, 100% of the general fund will pay for people unless we do something. Now, what do we have to do? And the council only has two choices. We're working all the choices we can, but I'll tell you, we've got some challenges out there bringing business into Roy. And although we have a pretty good sizable amount of money in sales tax coming to Roy City, the sales tax coming to Roy City has nothing to do, not a lot to do with the amount of money where people are spending in Roy City, as much it has to do with the amount of people we have in the city. The law says this, 50% of the sales tax goes to the city by which the tax occurs. 50% goes into a general fan, fund at the state level, and then based on population, it is in fact redistributed back to the city. If you look at the numbers, a sizable amount of money coming into the city on sales tax, one of our big revenue generators, comes into the city because of our population, not because they're selling, or there's a sale taking place in the city. So what does that really mean? A lot of you drive the streets of Roy City a lot, and it should not come as a big surprise, we got well over 15 storefronts in Roy City that are empty. And unlike Riverdale, who basically had hobby lobby, wanting to come to Riverdale for the last three years, we can't get people to come to Roy. Let me repeat that. We can't get them to come Roy. We're actually driving them, dragging them, doing everything we can, incentivizing to try to bring business to Roy. Now, we can argue the reasons, and it's going to take time to fix that, and we are actively engaged in fixing it. But the fact of the matter is, we do not anticipate a big change in terms of a revenue stream the last two years and what we're going to project and what's projected the next years. And yet, the cost to sustain and keep the good employees in Roy City is going to continue to consume that revenue stream that we do have. And three years from now, I'm projecting we will probably have about 100% of this general fund going nothing but pay for employees. So now it creates a challenge, and here's the challenge. The council will have two choices. Neither one is easy. It'll either be face to have to consider doing the only tax they can influence, which is property tax, and basically do a property tax increase, or they cut people and services. And my fear as a mayor is simply this, neither one, in my opinion, is acceptable. So if we can constrain a little bit, not spend a little bit, not buy a little bit, so that we can prolong this until we come up with a solution, then my position was we save jobs. And that's the premise of my argument, because I can't change the revenue stream, and I can't change the commitment this council has made to... And I can't change the commitment this council has made to make sure we take care of our employees. But someday, there's going to run out of money unless we come up with a fix. And the choices are simple. Increase taxes, and I promise you that will upset a whole lot of people, or remove employees from the rolls for Roy City, which is going to make a whole lot of people upset as well. It doesn't work either way for me. And so we have to be constrained. And if that means we basically hold back making a promotion here or maybe not getting an ice rink there, then maybe, just maybe, we have an opportunity to hold this back until we can bring new businesses in here and generate sales tax to offset that. That is what we're trying to do. That's the premise of my argument. And if you've been party to all the papers I have written and all the meetings I've been involved, you will find that's the root cause. I'm concerned we're going to run out of money, when in fact, and the choices will be hard for this council. Now, I appreciate Officer, that basically said this. Doing a 37% property tax increase, and one time again, is crazy. And it may very well be this council needs to consider doing more incremental property tax increase so the shock is not so difficult. That's good business sense. But I'm going to tell you, if we do another 30% increase or 37% increase and generate the $900,000 we did on that, because we have to pay for the people, it's going to be hard. And the elected officials will pay dearly for that decision. But by the same token is we cannot, we cannot compromise the service that we're providing to the residents. So if you want a hard conversation, a hard decision, those are it. And they're coming at us pretty rapidly. We're trying to address it. So please, I appreciate the comments. And I'm not, I don't have a problem telling it the way it is. You may not like what I have to say, but I'm going to tell you how I feel. I'm going to tell you what's straight. And although there are worthy opportunities for promote people, my concern about the promotion was simply based on this. In the two organizations I assessed in the paper, there were 43 employees. When this proposal was done, and although it has been changed a bit, 17 of those employees will be supervisors. The ratio is 2.88 to 1. Okay? In federal standards, in the national average, it's usually around 9 to 1. That's not how it is here in this organization. So that's okay. It just is what it is. But we tried to do the best we can. And if you look at the numbers, every 155 employees in Roy City should at least got their fair share of that million dollar increase. That equates to $6,500 to every employee in Roy City. Now, you may not have got that much of it, but if you factor that out, that's exactly what we paid to keep the employees here and keep them going. Now to the problem about public safety. And it's a bigger problem than we can solve in this room, and I'll be off the table with this comment. The report that Jason provided me this morning was absolutely clear. In the state of Utah, we've got 600 vacancies in officers, police officers, that we cannot hire. Now, it's not because of Roy City, and it's not, it's because the legislature passed a law that basically messed up the employees' retirement program. And we're going to take some action. I talked to the chief about it today. I've already basically sent a note down to the Utah League and Cities and Towns and told them my position and my concern. The bottom line is, we have got to fix that. Or we can have all of this nice salary we're paying, but people will not come to work with us in the public safety if they have to live with us and have to work until they're 70 years old. That has got to be fixed. And that's not going to happen in this room, it's going to happen to legislator. But our voices need to be heard, and we're ready to tell that message however that may be. We've got some challenges, we're going to work those challenges. But the fact of the matter is, we're doing the best we can with what we got. So here's my message, and I'll stop talking. I do not have a problem.
So I have a comment.
I don't have a problem.
I have a comment.
Hold on, hold on, Joe, I'll be right there. I don't have a problem if you basically feel that what the mayor says you've got a concern with. That's okay. In fact, I would encourage you to come back to me or come back to your boss and say, I don't necessarily like what the mayor has to say. Please do that. I'm okay with that. I don't take it personal. But what is important is, is that I'm not going to do it because I have nothing better to do. I'm going to look at the facts, get past the emotion, and I'm going to make informed decisions. And I'm going to stand by those decisions. That's what I have to do. I have no other choice. And so I'm sharing with you right now is, I'm concerned that if we don't do something and a city council's not willing to address property tax, then it's going to be hard to pick who doesn't work for Roy City in the next three years. And I don't want to see that. That's my comment. Joe, you had a comment?
Yeah, so going along with everything that you've just stated and what Dave Tafoya stated and what Jason stated, we're worried about running out of money. We don't have money for meters. We don't have money going forward to support all the employees at some point. But we're going to spend $360,000 for an ice skating rink. I say you postpone the ice skating rink. Take that $365,000, put it into some capital improvements. Put it into the water meters. We took some amenities out of North Park, George Wallen Park, and we were going to at some point put them into Amaraussel. We've got municipal that needs to be spruced up. That park needs some love. Why don't we take that $365,000 and put it towards that? You know, there are people that want a cemetery. Can we use some of the money to at least start securing property for that? Let's use that $365,000 wisely and put the ice skating rink off for a year or two until we can figure, can we get some private public partnership? Can we do different things, some sponsorship money? You know, can we create a recreation district where we work on the complex and an ice skating rink and invite our sister cities to participate in that and build a big nice facility that probably will not cost us as much in that bond as we're spending on the rec center currently? There are some things we can do. Let's use this money wisely and still be able to take care of our good employees.
Okay, and I appreciate that, Councilman Paul. So here's the question, counsel. Any other comments, or are we ready for a motion? And I'm sensing, since there might be a good discussion, do we have a motion that basically approves the budget as written with the exception of the ice rink?
Before we go there, you got comments?
I make that motion.
Any other members?
I have a comment on that. I just, when I ran, it was past the time of the ice rink. It had already been approved. It had already been, actually, the ribbon cutting had happened. So there's a roomful of people here that may or may not agree with that, but there was a commitment to the citizens of Roy. And I think at least it behooves us to say we will consider that in the future, to not just take that off the table, to not say that's off the table because we have other needs now. Because there were, there was a large contingency that were very supportive at that time, that wanted that. So the fact that they're not here, they assume that it's already happening, that it was already part of that commitment that was made to them. So from my perspective, I'm not saying that we have to do it immediately, but we can't just take it off the table because we see other needs at this point.
Okay, good comment. Anybody else like to comment, Brian?
Boy, where do I begin? The ice skate, the ice skating rink. Councilwoman Burrell is correct. It was, it was approved in October, November? I can't remember the, but it was prior to this new council. And initially, I was for it. But after seeing the cost, after seeing the few weeks that the window would be open to us to be able to utilize it, it concerned me. It also concerns me of the impact it would have on the neighbors and the potential impact it might have on our Christmas display, which is exquisite. Thanks to the staff. So I'd hate to see any of those things blow up because we went with an ice rink. The other concern I have that's not been addressed, and I hope it will eventually, is that where they want to put the ice rink, that dedicated oval was set aside for mothers who had experienced or lost a child through sudden infant death syndrome. That's why those trees stand where they do, right Travis? And forever, that's been referred to on the inner circle as Sid's Pond. I would hate to disrupt that. I would hope that there's another piece of ground that we could put it on. I feel like putting an ice rink behind the fire station is similar to trying to put an elephant into scuba gear. You can do it, but somebody's going to get hurt trying. And my point is, is that I'm glad to see it's been tabled so that we can have these discussions. That being said, while I've got the mic, I just, I want the people who work for the city to realize that when this particular council member responds to the criticisms coming over social media, I have yet to throw any of you under the bus. I want you to know that. Because I can't do the job that you do for us. And I think that you guys really deserve a round of applause for what you bring the city. I really do. And I just wanted you to know that prior to leaving this meeting because generally, I don't see you all at the same time. Actually, I'm glad I don't see you individually either in my rearview mirror with your lights on. So anyway, but I just want you to know that. Regarding, regarding the water lines and the water meters, yes, I did, I did passionately complain, stress, whatever word you want to use, about balancing that off of the backs of the rate users. Because it just didn't seem fair. The little old lady that wasn't going to be using any more water was going to get hit with the same rate increase as the person that's got six kids and a dog. And it just didn't seem right. And so I'm glad that we're able to go back with this money and do those things. And I wholeheartedly agree, probably for the first time ever with Councilman Tafoya, because we don't generally agree that that would be a good place to start using that money. Anyway, thanks, thanks for what you do. Thanks for being who you are. Thanks for your time. Thanks for coming out.
Mayor, may I speak one more time to our public employees? I think it's really critical that we recognize that I never want my public service people lowballed. It's important to me to know that when I'm buying a service, I'm buying the very best that I can have. And so if we're looking at, at a reason to recruit and maintain the very best public employees we can, I think that's critical. And I think that for me personally, I want to hear my public employees know that I support them and that I will always look to that. Not because it might be a popular decision to raise our taxes, but because I want to know that I'm not going to try and lowball them. I want to know when the ambulance driver arrives at my front door that he's happy. That's important to me. And so I think it's important for them to recognize that there are people that support them. There are people that recognize the value and will continue to do that, even at the expense of maybe some public criticism. So I appreciate what our employees are doing all the time.
Thanks, Jan. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just say my two cents worth. First of all, I just want to make sure that as far as some of the items that are in the budget, some of the items that Jason first talked about was some of the changes in some of the employee structures. I support some of those changes. There's been some job descriptions in that that have been done in the past that really were not the actual job descriptions for the job that the person was doing. That was done just out of convenience. We're just going to throw them in this position. And it really did not make sense. It's time to start cleaning up some of these job descriptions that we have in the city to make sure that our employees are working under the job descriptions that they are actually doing. There's also been some organizations in some of our departments that have not actually been working to the best of its functionality. And so they need, some of those organizational changes that we're making have been needed and will afford to make the department even better. The mayor mentioned as far as like the number of supervisors per the number of people. I actually don't agree with that because I am actually in a position where I am a supervisor over now, only over two to three people. And in my organization, that is what's required for the department that I'm in. We do not have to go by any average that's out there for the number of supervisors per employee. It actually should be based on the job and the responsibility of the supervisors and the job and responsibility of the employees. As far as the ice rink goes, I was on the council when that was approved. That is something that we have been talked about for many years as far as an enhancement to the area and to our Christmas lights. I feel that, that it is a good amenity. Sometimes you have to bring amenities into the city to be able to create a camaraderie about, with our citizens in our area to make sure that there, we've got activities and amenities in our city that our citizens enjoy, love, bring other people to our area to also enjoy these amenities that we have. Bringing amenities to our city is always an unknown. It's something when you bring it, you never know if it's going to be a hit or if it's going to be a bomb. There's no way to know when you do anything like that. So I was on the council that approved that. I do want to, I do support bringing in sponsorships and to the ice rink. I think it is a perfect example to be able to bring sponsorships and some private donations to, to help with the cost of that. I think it's something that we really need to push for and to look at. I do support Councilmember Tafoya's decision to table the ice rink for right now and go ahead and use those on the need of the water meters to make sure that we finish that up, to make sure that we can go ahead and move forward with that. But I also agree with Jan Burrell that it is also something that we do need to, we do have a ramp grant that was approved. I do understand that it is overall all taxes. But if we can put, bring together some sponsorships to be able to help cover it and to work out parking, to look at, to look at some of the questions and concerns that we have with it, it is something that we can totally look in the budget to make, to see if we can bring it to the, to the table, back to the table again. The ice rink would also be a dual use. It's not something that is just used the four times, four or three times out of the year. We will make sure that it's a dual use and that it's used all year round. So there is some things that we can also look at towards the, those amenities to make sure that they're multi-use and to make sure we get the best bang for our buck out of the, you know, out of our amenities that we do for our citizens. I take very strongly all of the comments and things that are either given to me or told to me about. told to me about as far as different things, different, either concerns or questions, I take all of them to heart. And I do look at all sides and I really try to look at all sides to make sure that we all make the right decision. And I think that's for all of the council members here. I think we do that on everything. I think that's one thing I've just been saying lately. It's kind of the beauty of being on a council because you do have different personalities and different mind thinking to be able to all make the decisions. We don't always agree, but we try to do what's best for our citizens. So I do support the budget as it is written with the changes that we, that Councilmember Tafoya stated about the ice rink and putting the money towards the water meters.
Okay. Before we go for a motion comment?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just remember, we're only talking to $27,000 for the operation cost for this budget. The $360,000 was done in a previous budget. It's not a capital item for this next budget.
Something that won't be spent right now though.
So what we could do, and I'll have to see legal or finance, is that maybe have to be something we come back at a different time to reallocate that money. And to reallocate that money from a general fund into a utility fund has a little bit of elephants that have to be done and dressed and stuff like that. It's gonna be difficult, but we can do it.
Okay.
Okay, my turn.
With the possibility to revise is what you're saying.
Yes, right.
This is talk on Jason's comment, which just means a lot of people might not understand this, but the council approved the skating rink 5-0 on January at the mid-year budget, okay? So the money was already there to set and go for that. He's talking about the ongoing cost, what it would be in this budget is $30,000. That's what he's trying to explain right there.
With expenses minus projected revenues, that's what we're...
Right. So that's, that's about what he's talking about. But the council can not go forward with that allocation. We can choose to do what we think is right and what's proper. Yes, as Jan echoed and I've echoed, we promised this, we want to get it done, but we do have other priorities such as the water meters and again, the chiller for this building, which is required. So at this time with the budget, that is probably the best use of those funds. And remember, it's one-time funds for that type of expense. It's not ongoing funds, so you couldn't use those funds for public safety, employee wages or anything like that. So just to make that clear. Now, to you guys that are here, your employees, I will always stand by you, I'll always represent you, I'll always do what's best for you. You deserve everything that you get and what you have, and you deserve a hell of a lot more than what you're receiving right now, okay? Comments have been made that it's doom and gloom, that's not all the case, all right? There are ways that we can make this work. And eventually it will plateau to make out, and even is talking with Matt, he says years from now it'll plateau, so it won't always be a continuous going fund, okay? But we exist as a community. As a community, we are nothing without you as employees. It doesn't happen, it doesn't work without you. Roy City isn't a city without you. We are who we are because of you, and I believe in you and will continue to do so. And any council member, any elected official, I don't care what utility, municipality, state government, they're lying to you when they say we're not gonna raise taxes or fees. That's a flat-out lie. In order to be like a business and proceed with a business, economy and fees go up. It's a due diligence and proper business and property cities, municipalities to make sure you stay above that line and never have to come back again with 37% increase. If you do it properly, you do it every few years to make sure you're staying up with revenues, if you have to, and you still always maintain and look at the budget. As Stuart said, he made a good comment, that's just a flat truth. If you want to be responsible government, that is the proper way to do things. Nobody likes fees and taxes, but it's a part of our life, it's our reality. And those who say they can't ever do that are not being honest and telling you the truth that way, okay? Just know if it comes to that, that's my vote. But we'll work always to do our due diligence, be financially responsible. But if it helps take care of you to make sure we are who we are at this great city who we are because of you, that's where I stand and I always have and I always will. And with that, that's just my comment on those, and we can go ahead with the other motion.
Okay. Any other comments? We're out of public, but...
Yeah, I'm just arriving at 6 o'clock, I guess I arrived at the change time of the original...
5:30, I'm sorry, yeah. But, but let me just, and I appreciate all the comments, and I think you already got a pulse in terms of how the council feels about important issues. So if nothing else, hopefully you'll walk away from this conversation, understanding is, is that we may not always agree. A lot of times we have difference of opinion, but the reality of this conversation is, is that we're going to try to do the best that can be done for both the residents and the employees to make sure it's done right. And, and, and if we're doing it right, we'll, we'll look at all the facts and make what appears to be a sound decision in terms of what's really taking place. But if you question at least anything the mayor has said, then do me one favor, read the budget. It's 130 pages, 130 pages, but it gives you a wealth of information of what the reality is. So read the budget. But we're committed to do what we can to make it work. As hard as it is, we're gonna make it work. And so I just want to let you know, it's gonna get tough. And as it gets tough, we're, we're willing to step up to the plate and address the issues and make it work. But when it's all said and done, please don't misunderstand my next comment, the tough choices of the council will be how much property tax increase and/or how many people we lose. That is reality. And no matter what you might think or what you might feel or how you feel good about comments, thank you for that, we appreciate you feeling that way, but let's get back to reality. The facts are the facts. You expect us to manage effectively and you expect us to do the right thing, and we will do that. But recognize, sometimes the answers are not always easy. So having said that, I think we got a comment from Joe, he said that, his words, so here's my question, council. And Andy, I need to have you help us guide this through this because we're gonna have to, I'm sensing from the council there'll be a change in approval of this budget. So advise us on how we want to set this wording up.
How you propose, what you do is you do a motion to approve ordinance 18-16 adopting the fiscal 2019 budget as proposed, except that the money that was sent for the ice rink be allocated to the chiller and the meter readers. I believe that's what, like that's be set. And then you're gonna, and levying a property tax rate as stated in that budget.
Ever question?
Yeah. Go ahead. I'd like to, I'd like a clarification in terms of the comment about levying a property tax revenue rate.
I think Mayor Matt should address that because every year the county comes out with a tax rate and he has to, we have to do that. So Matt, go ahead.
That's right, Matt. And tell us, the property tax rate should have dropped as a result of going in this next fiscal year.
The property tax rate did drop because as inflation rises, that rate does drop. So every year we have to levy that rate.
Okay.
And as part of the, as part of the budget, it's just levying that rate to include that revenue.
And you have that property tax rate that's been directed, we're gonna get?
It was on the, I have it up in the chair.
Sorry, I just want to make sure for the record that we know what that rate will be.
I must have left it in my office.
That's okay. Okay, we'll pull that. Okay. I need a motion based on Andy's comment. Do I have a motion?
We may have to clarify that a little bit because apparently the money that's set aside for the ice rink, that was only...
It's not in this budget. The only numbers for the ice rink are the operating costs for the budget. The 360 was done in a prior this budget year, so it's not part of it.
We need amendment... We'll direct staff to make the proper adjustments.
Yeah, that's the way to do that. And then bring it back as a, as a change in the adjustment to the budget. You okay with that, Matt?
Yeah, keep that, maybe keep that in the general fund, we can put it in the council budget, so it will just let you guys do what you want.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Are we okay with that, Andy?
I agree.
So put it in the general fund considering...
Okay. So we need to walk through the statement. So I, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I got a motion that we approve ordinance number 18-16 to adopt the fiscal year budget 2019 and levy property tax revenue rate with the adjustment of taking, setting aside the $300,000 from this year's budget into next year's general fund budget and appropriate those funds to be used to buy the chiller and the rest of that portion to buy the meter readers.
That would have to be an adjustment from a previous budget, is that correct?
Correct. 323,000 and have that go to the general fund.
Correct.
Okay. So just to have the adjustment of 323,000 go to the general fund.
Okay.
With the intent of buying the chiller and the meter readers.
Okay. Do I have a second?
That's not right. It's not 323, it's just 23,000.
Right.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Adjust the 27,000 to go back into the general fund and the money that was already approved in this year for the ice skating rink to go back into the general fund.
Yes.
And then appropriate those to those needs that we stated.
Okay, I agree.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I second that, that's right.
Wow. Okay, roll call vote.
I have a question. Can I ask it now?
Better get it now before the vote.
That's what I thought. If we commit to buying the chiller, does that not send us down the road towards the ice rink anyway?
No, I don't believe so because the chiller is already, needs to be replaced.
Okay, that's what I need to...
If, if we were going through the ice skating rink, it would be like about 140,000 instead of the 90,000.
Okay. I'll sleep better tonight.
And so will the office grills because it was pretty hot in here this last week.
Okay. So here we go. I've got a, I've got a, I'm looking for a roll call vote. Thank you. Morgan?
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman.
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. You're welcome to sit, and we're gonna talk about some other important things. Hopefully they'll move a little quicker, but thank you for your comments. We need to go into public hearing in consideration of request to amend the zoning map from an RE 20, single-family residential to an RE 17, single-family residential, or excuse me, R 17. I'm sorry, you're right. The property located approximately 4248 South, 2900 West. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Mayor, make that motion, we go into public hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we're in a public hearing. Steve?
The proponent is here, if you would like him to speak first.
Okay, let's have, let's have the proponent step up and let's talk about what he'd like to do with that property. And who is that? Did he leave with the group?
Did he get rid of my...
If you can give us your name and address, thank you.
My name is Richard Jorgensen. I live at 4248 South, 2900 West in Roy. You want a comment on this?
Just give us some of your, maybe your own comments, what your ideas are, and then we'll go from there.
We have a small piece of property, 2.5 acres behind our home where I've had horses and cattle off and on over the last maybe 18 years. At this time, I'm unable to do the work required, so we've decided to develop the property into housing. The map that we've outlined, that we've had drawn up, will accommodate nine lots. They're much bigger than the, than the zoning requires. This is a R 17 zoning they're asking for. The lots are, are much bigger than that, but they, they fit in the area. And the properties around this are R 17 residential, R 8. So we would like to go forward with developing that property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, you want to add the city's comments to that?
Yes, I would. As mentioned, this is a request to amend the zoning map from RE 20 to R 17. And the planning commission did hold a public hearing last week on June 12th, and the staff report does mention that there was no public comment at that time. The map on the screen right now just kind of gives you the location. This is just south of the newest car wash we have, the wash factory there on Midland Drive. It is right now just an open field. When you look at the general plan, it does call out for it to be medium density, single family. Again, as, as mentioned, the reason why it's not a general plan amendment is because the R 16, R 17, R 18, and R 110 are within that designation. The zoning map is on the right, depending which way, you know, shows that the RE 20 is just kind of an island unto itself. You've got commercial to the north. R 17 is the light green and R 16 is kind of the light yellow with R 18 kind of down, down in the corner in the darker yellow. The planning commission did have a discussion a little bit of should it be R 16 or R 17? Either one really meet each other just because they're all in the area, but the planning commission did recommend that R 17 be approved, and that would also be staff's recommendation.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Does anybody have comments they'd like to share, thoughts? Okay, having seen none or hearing none, council, do I have a motion to go out of public hearing? Most of you out of public hearing.
Don't move.
Do, this is, this is not a roll call, this is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, then council, council comments?
Yeah, looking at this, one, one question I had is, I was like, why was it a RE 20? But it sounds like you had some animals and stuff, so that's probably why it was on that back in the day. I, yeah, I think R 17, I think fits well in this area where it's kind of surrounded by it. It sounds like the lots might be a little bit larger when he finally gets the site plan together, but I think R 17 kind of finishes up this little piece and fits in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anybody else comments? Councilman Paul, do you have any comments from wherever you're at?
No.
Okay, then do I have a motion then to approve ordinance number 1813, approving the amendment of the zoning map from RE 20, single-family residential to an R 17, single-family residential at the property located approximately 4248 South, 2900 West?
I'll make that motion as stated.
You said it well, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're gonna enter into a public hearing to consider request to amend the Title X zoning regulation, okay? Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Mayor, make that motion, we go into public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Waiting for Joe Paul to, did he say?
Aye.
There it is, okay. Okay. This, we're in a public hearing to discuss then the Table 17, change, Chapter 17 table use to remove the car wash from a specific place. Steve, do you want to talk to this?
Yes, I would. Good evening, Mayor and Council, again. This kind of request came from multiple facets of people. Councilmember Paul had first mentioned it, then a week later, a few planning commissioners mentioned it. So the end of May during the planning commission's work session, we talked about it, what zones, why, how come, what for, kind of go through all of the process and what have you. And then June 12th, we held a public hearing to go through, to look at which zones should car washes be involved in, which zones should not be. Under council's advice from Assistant Attorney Flint and with my recommendation as well, we looked to remove car wash as a use from community commercial, regional commercial, and light manufacturing, leaving it in the manufacturing zone. I did provide somewhat of a similar map that I'm gonna show you in the, in the staff report. The only difference in this one is I just identified at the top in red is where the manufacturing zone is. It's 3350 South, 1900 West, rather than light manufacturing, what does kind of intermix within the residential zones. Then of course, the regional commercial, which is on 1900 from the south borderline to about 53, 5200 South area, and then community commercials kind of throughout the city itself. fifty-two hundred south area, and then community commercials kind of throughout the city itself. Again, planning commission did hold a public hearing, there were a couple of comments, which are in your staff report, making mention of what their thoughts and opinions were on that. Both planning commission and staff would recommend just removal of the, the use from those three particular zones, leaving it in the manufacturing.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody have comments about this particular proposal ordinance? Okay, seeing none, council, do I have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're out of public hearing, council, comments?
Steve, just questions for you now.
Yeah, I got one.
So, every existing one, or every one that has been application, they are approved for where they're going, is that correct?
Correct, they still have rights to be and to exist. I mean, we have one that's not being built, but they did get their application in prior to all the, you know, the discussion and public hearings, so they do, they have, they're vested in that. If they choose to stop and not do it, then they would lose those rights at all.
That's the next question, if it was sold and they still wanted to use it as a car wash, the new person would still be able to do that.
Correct, that, they become a non-conforming use, and the only time that they would be no longer that use is if they voluntarily stop for a year, so.
So, if it's not built within the year, then it's?
Well, building has a different timeframe because they have, they've been given the rights, they have, I think it's twelve to eighteen months to get it built and finished, but if they're an existing car wash now and they stop using it for twelve months, then they lose that right.
But, but the one that is currently on hold by their own?
They're, they're not on hold, they're still going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they've actually got planning commission approval last week for a site plan and architectural.
Okay.
So, again, just for clarification.
Are there two that currently in the process, Steve, there's one on forty-three hundred west, fifty-five hundred south, and then the one at the Warrens on nineteen hundred? Those are the two still that are currently applied and approved?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So, again, for clarification on the map, the only place a future car wash could go is that nice little circle on thirty-nine?
Correct.
And nineteen hundred.
If you approve it as, as recommended.
Yeah, question, Steve, secondary car washes, like, somebody builds a convenience store and a bubble bath next to it, or adjoining that, what, does that change the game?
It, it does, because a car wash would be a secondary use, and if you remove it from the listed uses, then they would not be able to.
All right.
We do have, just so you know, we do have two C stores that have active car washes, we have one C store that does not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Yeoman, you have a comment?
So, just down, let's just, we felt it was easier just to like, take, remove it completely other than manufacturing zone, than limiting the number, right? Because for future, let's just say for some that all of a sudden they're all torn down, or they've rechanged, and there's now something else, and we want to like, do you know what I mean, there, one wants to come back, and we don't have that many or something, then it would be best for us to put it back into the ordinance to say, hey, it might not be a bad idea? Instead of limiting, just completely take it out.
Yeah, the council has the, the right to do, to limit it out of the, the ordinance or whatnot. The issue comes is limiting numbers, what's the public health and safety reason?
Okay.
From a legal standpoint, we really don't have that legal standpoint to stand on, so this is why if you live to a zone, you can't.
You know, other, like others' uses, that we do have limits, there is a public and health and safety issue, so-
Got it.
We limit the numbers. This one, I can't think of, you know, Andy and I have talked many a times of how do we do it, and this was probably the best way.
Okay.
You know, if in ten years, all of a sudden, of the fourteen we have, ten of them go down, and we want more, we just bring it back.
Bring it back, okay.
Anybody can come and request rezone request for any business at any time, so that's.
Okay.
Okay, council, okay, having said that.
I make a motion to approve it.
Okay, so I'm going to take that from a distance, Councilman Paul, that consideration ordinance eighteen fourteen, approving amendment for Title X zoning regulation, chapter seven, table of use to remove car washes as listed in the RC, excuse me, the CCRC and the LM zoning, do I have a motion? And I think I just got that from Councilman Paul, do I have a second?
I'll second.
This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you, okay. Let's, can, let's move on, we got just a couple more to work. Public hearing to consider request for amending the Title X zoning regulation, chapter ten, general property development standard, adding ten dash ten dash twenty-three swimming pool private standards. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
May I make that motion, we go into public hearing?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, having heard that, we're into public hearing, Steve, you want to tell us how we got here, and then we'll open for comment, comment.
Okay, reason why we're here on this particular item, a few years back, someone come for, you know, what are the standards for swimming pool, I researched the ordinance, couldn't find anything, put it on my list of things to do, and just got bombarded with many other things. It was brought back up again of what are the standards, do I have to have a six-foot fence, do I have to have all these other things, and it's not in the ordinance.
That's surprising.
When I researched it, it was in the nineteen fifty-three, nineteen seventy-three, the two thousand four, but for some reason, when two thousand five, when they amended the, the zoning ordinance to what we have now, it was removed. Doesn't mean that I haven't approved swimming pools, I've just addressed them as accessory buildings, you know, five feet from property lines, so far from the house, and what have you. Talking with the assistant attorney, Flint, we just came up with the, the worded, as we looked at what two thousand four's verbiage was, what other cities have, have, have got, and we came up kind of with this paragraph, making it, again, as simple as we could, but very concise of what requirements are. So, here, you know, talks about what a swimming pool is. I don't want to regulate that four-inch-deep kiddie pool, it gets filled up, kids splash, and then they pour it out. It's ones that are going to be more permanent, so we did, we put a twenty-inch, anything twenty inches deeper is now going to be under these requirements, it's got to be at least five feet from property lines, fifteen feet from your neighbor's home, have a six-foot fence that surrounds it, now that could just be the backyard that's surrounding, or the pool itself. It's got to have lockable gates that self-lock and self-latch by themselves, so it just will shut. And then if you're putting lighting, make sure it's just not glaring at your, your neighbors, really is what it comes down to. So, again, the planning commission had a, a public hearing on this, you've got within your staff report that no one came forward with any comments, planning commission recommended approval of this amendment, and so did staff.
Okay, thank you, it's open for a couple, public comment, if you have it, please, would you come to the table or to the microphone, you, give us your name and address, thank you.
Keith Wilson, I don't know if I want to give you my address because my pool will not match those codes. Actually, I have one problem with that code, I live on a corner lot, so my pool's in my side yard with a six-foot fence. The problem is, it's about five feet from my garage because of space, and about four feet from my shed. Other than that, it meets every code. So, I would like that amended.
There's nothing in here that says it can't be two inches from your house, just can't be fifteen feet closer to your neighbor's house.
Well, that says from any dwelling.
Yeah, from, it doesn't say anything about on property, dwellings.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, from a legal standpoint, you guys, dwelling is a, bro.
But it says on adjacent property.
Dwelling is, is your home, but-
I have an attached garage.
Just, just keep reading, dwelling on adjacent.
On adjacent property.
Fifteen feet from dwelling on adjacent property.
So, I'm good.
Yes, you're good.
I was concerned about that, too.
You're good.
And it might very well be your-
Because you live in a corner lot, you have a small backyard, yeah.
Your side yard's bigger, yeah.
And it might very well be that you're grandfathered in because of an existing situation.
Yeah, because this was never in the ordinance.
But it still doesn't matter.
Oh, you're going to expand it?
I'm probably going to put in a fifteen-foot or a twelve-by-twenty-four.
Oh, you're, okay, so you're thinking of something else.
Right now, it's fourteen foot by three feet.
But it still would be with farther than fifteen feet from your neighbors.
It would be ridiculously, you know, it's in a six-foot, my fence is-
So, it still would not go outside of this ordinance, is that correct?
Yeah, no.
Perfect.
I got a question about the five-foot regulation, is that five foot from where the cement is, or five foot where the water begins? When you pour a pool?
Where the water begins.
So, there's, okay, just making that clear.
Okay.
Uh, from property lines. From your property line, where can the water be?
One other question, the big twelve-foot stand-up pools above water, does this affect it at all?
The big twelve-foot?
Above ground, above-ground pools.
If they're twenty inches or more, yes.
Okay.
But what if they put them up and take them down? It's not a permanent structure.
You still have an issue of, do you want little kids walking in, into them?
That's a public safety issue, just to refer to.
Public safety issue is just put a fence around it, then I don't care if it's taken down every winter, it's more of can't be this close, get your fence around it.
Yeah.
Five or six-foot fences.
See, I got a problem with that, because I go on my walk every night, I got four backyards that have those pools, they've been there for the past five years, I, but they don't, what are they considered? Because they're not, are you going to consider them a prior use, which is okay to be grandfathered in, or are you not?
Well, did they come and get approval, like everything else, as long as it was in legal?
You don't need approval to put, well, most people are not going to say, I need to go get a pool permit to put up my pool in the backyard. Real, that's the reality, but I know what the law says, but I'm sure there's at least a hundred or more homes out there who haven't done that.
Well, there's probably a hundred more homes that don't have permits for sheds, or finished basements, or, you know, those are just things we, as we catch them, we try to get them in compliance.
So, I mean, I, I get it, it's tough, but I think it's also going way beyond when somebody puts up their pool and say, oh, now you got to put a six-foot fence up around that to make sure things are compliant, just to get in, but people have been doing it.
What if their backyard's fenced?
That you consider when you buy them.
Right, I mean, it comes with that also. I understand the permanent indoor pools with this, but the above-ground ones could be something different.
A different ordinance for the above-ground ones?
What if your backyard is fenced?
Right, I mean, that, yeah, that, that covers it that way.
Then it fits it already, if your backyard is fenced.
And lastly, I wanted to thank you all for your votes on the ice rink. Originally, I thought it was an indoor ice rink, and I approved that one because it would draw revenue, but when I found out it was an outdoor one, and we had, you know, twelve weeks of skating at most, I quickly changed my mind. Thank you very much, and I'm grateful for the transparency that you all showed.
Thank you, thanks for your comment. Okay, anybody else have a comment they'd like to share? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to go out of public, oh, I'm sorry, please.
Randy Skadden, forty-four, thirty-three, south, eighteen hundred west, I am actually also with Dave Tafoya on this one, too, because how does the above-ground pool, I think there should be a clause specifically where it has to be a permanent fixture, because you can fill up a pool and take down those pools, and that's a lot of what our citizens are currently doing. I know my parents have done that in years past, and I guess from that perspective, I would just urge caution. I guess what's, has it been an issue in the past? Are we, I mean, what's the concern outside of public safety? Have we had any drownings because of people that have put up these type of permanent, or these, these temporary pools? Or, I mean, again, what's driving this outside of the fact that it just hasn't been officially?
Remind me again, how deep can it be?
He said twenty inches.
It's twenty inches.
Twenty inches.
Twenty inches.
Twenty inches, up to my knees.
But that's the thing, I can go to Walmart right now and-
Right, and you can buy a blow-up pool like that, and you're done.
Exactly, correct.
That's twenty inches.
Correct, that's easily twenty inches, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, we can, I appreciate your comments, but, but here's, I think, the key, now that we've understand the depth, the breadth of the conversation, the council can go up there and simply make a recommendation to this that says, this deals solely with in, in the ground-
In ground.
In ground pools.
And that's, I guess, what I would recommend.
And that'll, yeah, and that allows that flexibility you're talking about, and if a person, as Dave suggested, goes down and buys one and takes it down, who cares, as long as they are safe, I mean, that's really what the issue is.
Right.
But, but for the purpose, I think, from the planning commission perspective, they want to make sure you provide some guidance, so people who want to put, and I always interpreted this one to be an in-ground pool, to be able to interpret that says, here's the policy, here's the guidance to do that.
Right.
And then they can provide the proper guidance to get that done right. My concern would be is I don't want to be the first, I don't want my grandchildren to be the first person to fall into an ungated or unfenced pool in my community.
For sure.
And, and I think that's really the public safety component to this discussion, okay?
Agreed, and you have very cute grandchildren, I know some.
Thank you.
What are you shaking your head, Steve?
Please.
The concerns I have is, again, how, how temporary is a temporary pool? My kids can still climb a, a set of stairs and get in an above-ground pool.
Right, Steve, but you do understand twenty inches is a blow-up pool at Walmart?
But at what?
Okay.
At what point do we say, okay, public safety is public safety? And say, okay, regardless if it's an above-ground pool that may not have a permit, if they're using electrical, electricity, they should have a permit, and call it, just put a six-foot fence around it and call it good.
Yeah, that's, that's the discussion.
But here's the thing, we talk about public safety, but this is really back to a homeowner's decision, and it's the homeowner's policy to say, okay, am I meeting these requirements? The homeowner's responsibility to say, is my insurance company going to cover this or not, okay? That's where we're at on that.
Yeah, if you've got a ring pool for your kid, that doesn't apply, obviously. If you've got one of those little blow-up pools with the ring, and you fill it up, and it's this high, that doesn't apply. If you've got a three-foot pool that I do with, with a, a metal frame and rubber sides that you fill up like, like a military water tank, that applies because it's a metal structure.
Understand.
That you take, put up at the beginning of the year, I have a deck around it, it's got a step, I've got a ladder I put up to keep my kids from going in it, I lock the gates on the fences on both sides where people could access it, and I'm always out there when my kids are in it because they're ten and under. That applies to the ordinance, I would think, that's how I consider it, because a kid can drown in that if he's left alone.
Correct.
Or they're playing and they just hold each other under. That's, that obviously complies, in my view, I consider myself under that ordinance.
Okay.
Or if I get a bigger pool, it complies, or an in-ground pool obviously complies, where you need a six-foot fence. That's, that's how I would see it, and I think that's how it should be amended.
Okay, good comment.
Anything that's a metal-structured-framed pool should be included. So, if you go to Walmart and buy one of those fourteen-foot pools, that's included. If you buy one of those ones that you blow up, then it's got the ring around it, and it goes up two and a half feet, that's excluded because you're going to, it's going to get a hole in it, and just, you know, drop anyway in three weeks, it doesn't matter until you patch it and fill it up again. If it has a filter, it's included, if it doesn't have a filter, you're jacked.
Okay, well-
Just my, it's just my-
And I appreciate your comments, and the council needs to make that assessment, comment?
Jared Roper, forty-one, seventy-one, south, twenty-one, seventy-five, west.
Hi, Jared.
As a pool owner, I think it's a great idea, I think this is a great ordinance to put in. I think it helps the Roy City protect our neighbors and say, hey, if you have an issue, we've caught kids out there, we've had to pull out of the pool because they say they don't know how to swim, they don't know how to swim, we're pulling them out there in the shallow end, so I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you for your comments, please, you had a comment?
Brian, Richard Jorgensen, forty-two, forty-eight, south, twenty-nine hundred west. I really don't have a dog in the fight here, but it seems very clear to me that Steve's idea is really a good idea, and I'll, I'll try and explain why very shortly. If you have a pool, and it is deep enough for a child to get into, and they're able to scale the side, which they can, they can easily do the two-by-four, for your own safety and theirs, you should have a fenced yard or a fence around, around the pool. The big reason that I see that we haven't addressed yet is that if you have a child get into your yard, and your yard isn't fenced, they find a way to get into your pool and they drown, guess who's the insurance companies are going to go after? Or who the attorneys are that are going after it? Just a matter of public safety and your own welfare, you should have a six-foot fence around your property with a gate that automatically locks, just to consider, just to protect yourself, and, and little children.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your comments, anybody else like to make a comment on this subject? Okay, having seen none, council, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Most of you go out of public hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Always wait, and, I mean, now we're out of public hearing, council, comments?
Mayor, I think we should just probably table this issue, yes, it's a good direction to go, but there's still a question to say, I understand the public's- Yes, it's a good direction to go, but there's still a question to say, I understand the public safety reasons for all property owners, but there's also the silliness of it that says, okay, if I'm going to go buy me a blow-up pool, three, six-foot long, I have to go get a permit and pay the city to do that. Which is not a good, proper, public thing to do. So, I think wording needs to be changed a little bit, we go deep into, you know, to make that clear.
Maybe definition, uh, temporary.
Definition as to why, what definitions would be, what certain type of pools. But table until we can come back with a better solution. It's my motion.
Comments before we go for a motion?
I think there is-
I agree with that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think there is also some just more discussion or some wording that we could actually look at. And then Steve can definitely do that and then bring it back to us with some wording changes.
Okay, council, we agree with that? Then let's have a motion to table ordinance number eighteen-fifteen for clear definition in terms of the requirement.
So move. So move.
Second.
Do you have a second?
No, he-
Joe did it.
Joe did a second?
And then Dave did the second. Yeah, I think Morgan-
It's on the recording, I'm sure we'll get it right, Morgan. Okay.
She's got it.
I believe this one, is this a roll call or an all-in-favor?
It's not a roll call if you're going to motion to table.
Okay, then let's have a all-in-favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, tabled this one. Steve, we got some, we got some work, we got to do just clarification on the definition. Thank you, good conversation. We have a consideration of resolution eighteen-sixteen, interlocal agreement between Roy City and the Roy City Redevelopment Agency for the provisions of Community Reinvestment and Economic Management Services. Jason, you want to talk this one?
Yeah, so since we're going to do the RDA budget later, and since it's, part of it is the RDA committee, and part of it is an agreement with the council, it's on both the council and the RDA. So you just need to approve it.
Fine, he lost me.
What's agreement about?
It's an agreement, it's, it's the interlocal agreement between the RDA and the city. Yeah, but since it's, it's, yeah, so it's involving the RDA committee and the city, it's got to be on both the RDA and the city.
And the city.
Okay, that makes sense now.
Okay, any other comments? Everybody okay?
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve resolution eighteen-sixteen in interlocal agreement?
Mayor, I go ahead and make that motion to approve resolution eighteen-sixteen, an interlocal agreement between Roy City and the RDA agency.
Perfect, okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you for the second, this is a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Tavoye?
Aye.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, hey, we're finally in public comment. If you have something you'd like to share with us, please come to the mic, give us your name and address, and then we'll, we'll entertain your comments. Anything? Jared, please, step right up, thank you.
Jared Roper, forty-one, seventy-one, south, twenty-one, seventy-five, west. I'd like to say a good job to Roy City, the employees, councilmen, everyone, you guys all do a great job. Ross, Travis, you guys, public works, first responders, I think that's what I'm looking for. I got a fridge in my garage, I keep full waters, I take out, teach one of the officers, if I see him across the street, the public works guys, they come over and say, doing a good job. They're out there every weekend, I see them, you know, mowing the lawns, crossing guards, it'll be snowing Christmas, day after Christmas, he'll be out there shoveling the rocks, so the kid's going to get across first to school, so you guys are doing a good job.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else like to share a thought? Feeling, idea? Okay, seeing none? Let's go ahead and we'll jump into the reports and discussion. City manager's report?
Okay, I'm just going to kick Waste Management off discussion right away, okay? So, the mayor and I did meet with Beth Holbrook from Waste Management. We, we had the discussion that China shut down all their recycling, and then there was the discussion on recycling now, only five percent of the recycled goods are being recycled because they're considered clean. The other part are just taken to the landfill. So it is a considerable increase, and we did get with Beth, and she did say that we can postpone this until September. So we can have the discussion with the council on basically what the mayor and I feel like, and Matt, are, are three, are three options. Knowing that this will have to come before you on July seventeenth for approval, which will be Mayor Pro-Tim and Andy, as the mayor and I will be gone on the seventeenth. Basically, it's just a discussion today, but the three options are to completely eliminate the recycling program, or option B to mandate that everybody recycles and with the waste and have a one-time fee. Or three, only give the increase to those people that recycle. Here's the problem with all three of them. I'm not sure what the issue is on number one, if you just get rid of recycling, I'm not saying to do that, I'm just saying here's the options. Number two-
Wait, let's go back to number one, okay?
Okay.
So, if we just get rid of it altogether, there's no cost increase to any way whatsoever all the way around?
There may be a small increase in the tipping fee.
Just the tipping fees, though.
It's going to increase the tipping fees a little bit, but overall, the residents are going to see a decrease in the fees.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Number two, if you mandate that they all recycle and have a one-time fee, there's a lot of residents that do not want to recycle. So if we tell all of them, you have to recycle, I think that's going to be problematic. I don't think two's a great option. Number three, if you mandate that those that recycle are going to get the fee passed on to them, number one, we, we supposed to have a seventy-five percent committed fee to recycling, and we get a certain rate at the seventy-five percent.
What if it goes below that?
It, then it increases, the recycling increases.
Now, increase just to those who choose to use it.
Yes, yeah, but if we, if they know that this increase is coming, and they're already sitting the fence, and then we get a bunch of them that want to opt out, now we only have fifty percent or forty-five, the increase is going to be a lot higher.
They would have to know what it is, though.
Right.
Right? I mean, could, could that be part of what we-
Yeah.
How about, how about number, I'm throwing in a number four. We say we don't do recycling anymore, but add caveat that, that if you still wish to, this is the fee, this is how much it'll cost you, you need to sign up.
Yeah.
Can they do that with Waste Management, just by themselves, the citizen by themselves, call Waste Management to get a recycling in?
I don't know that they can, if, if you're going to recycle on your own, then you'll take it to wherever place you want to go recycle.
That's what you're talking about, recycle on your own, okay.
Out where my son lives, there's actually two recycling, like, I was, I noticed that he didn't have his recycling can out, but somebody else did, their neighbors did, and I says, you didn't get your recycling out? And he goes, oh, we're a totally different company. So, they have different, like, private companies that actually they've contracted through to come through and do different recycling. Is that something that we could offer, or, you know, like a private-
Well, I think if you opt out, then those people that want to recycle will just find wherever they want to go recycle. And then, our contract is up in two years.
I think they're going to want to have it picked up at the, at the curb, though.
Okay.
Not just take it.
Yeah, is there other companies that we could, that, that our citizens could pursue or contract with that they wanted to have a recycling?
We'd have to look into that.
In Clinton, I know, you can't have a company come out.
Yes.
The individual pays for it.
Yes. Yes, that's exactly what I think that we need to offer.
Yes, we can explore that and have that be one of the options. This was just to get an early discussion, while we did get a little bit of an increase in time to September, knowing that this has just come down in the last couple of weeks, and June is our opt-out, opt-in month. So, they gave us some little bit of time on it, we'll come up with some options, and that'll be before you guys on July seventeenth.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments on that? Could you tell them, and I think the paper we sent you gives you the numbers, but, but what is the monthly increase? A dollar?
Dollar twenty-three, I think.
Dollar twenty-three per month, per recycled container?
About two fifty a bill.
At the seventy-five percent rate, if it drops, then it's going to go up.
But that's a start.
So we would have to know how much that would go up.
Right, and we can find that out.
I thought we were already below the seventy-five percent take rate.
We are, they've just given us some lenience.
Yeah, they've given us until seven.
Already?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
But if we were to drop to, say, fifty or forty or whatever, we'd have to know what the-
We'll need to also list on there for the citizens, too, a second can. I mean, you know, because you're used to having two cans that you're, one recycling and one you're not, now you're down to one, and, do you know what I mean?
I think we're kind of being vague, we haven't really given staff a direction there.
Yeah.
So are we looking to say, let's get rid of it altogether, and just those who want to pay for the service, pay for the service?
Do we make in this decision now, or you're, or we're doing it July?
On the seventeenth.
Yeah, but what councilmember Burrell would like-
I like what you just said, Dave.
Okay.
Councilmember Burrell would just say, hey, come up with the options, and then look at the price difference on the seventy-five percent or the seventy, so if we drop below, what is it going to increase, so they're just aware of it?
Right.
And we'll get, yeah.
But, but Dave, I think the key to this is going to be is, is that the council meeting on the seventeenth will make that decision, and then we have got to be aggressive and get the word out to all of the residents as quickly as we can of that decision, so they can plan and decide.
Let me ask you guys, so was the opt-out time, I think that was just a city, not a Waste Management month? Or was it a combination of both? Because I think it was Kathy saying, oh, we need to do it so everything doesn't come in throughout the year.
No, there was a cost, there was a cost decrease if, if we kept the number of the seventy-five percent or above the participant.
Right, no, but I'm, I'm talking about the opt-out, Andy?
That came up a couple of years later, after the contract was signed, and we did it by ordinance or resolution, where, where we put that provision in, and there was that one-month time period.
Because I think if we're going to opt out, we need to open that window more, because the change is going to be after that date. So just keep that in mind.
Okay.
If that's one of the directions we go.
Well, honestly, I don't recycle correctly, as I'm hearing, so.
Most of it's taken to the landfill anyway.
I don't do mine clean, so.
Most of it's taken to the landfill anyway.
So I'm finding, like, mm, going to the landfill anyway.
Okay, anything else, Jason?
Yes, George Wallen, North Park, just an update that- George Wallen? I don't owe Joe Paul five dollars.
No, no, you're, no, we're actually, we're actually really impressed here. You are doing well.
Hey, I'll give you a break, because you're getting most of it right.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think you're fine.
Okay.
So, update-
Bless you, buddy.
Update is, the area is going to be under construction for the next couple of weeks. Beginning on Monday, they will be constructing the Bowery area, and on Wednesday, they will begin installation of the splash pad. Both contractors indicated it'll take them about seven to ten days to complete the project. During that time, we will need to close the park down, because there's going to be a lot of heavy equipment, so that's a great thing, so a couple of weeks, thanks to Travis and his crew for getting that done. So, yeah, good news on George Wallen.
You have a way to close it?
Fence it off.
Yeah, we'll, we'll adjust the temporary fencing that's, that's in the area. We've met with the contractors today, and they told us how big of an area they need for staging, and we'll, we'll just take the existing fencing and shuffle it and move it around.
It's looking good.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks real good. Okay, anything else?
Fifty-five-hundred, south, forty-three-hundred, west, the street light is in full operation mode.
Yeah, great.
Six-thousand, south, and the Trailhead Project coming along very nicely. Did you guys see them brick and mortar the bathrooms? We did have to pull them off the concrete for a little bit, get them on the Bowery at North Park, but they're working on that great. Remember July third, no council meeting? And for the audit committee, just to inform the rest of the council meeting, or council members, we are going with the Wiggins Company again for our auditors. They were awesome, very professional, very thorough, they worked with staff very well. So that'll be, that'll be who will do our next audit. And then our next big project is annexation. So, we do, we will need to get, I know Steve's already well ahead of it, but, once the budget was passed, I did say we need, do need to work on that to get that aligned and going. So, that's all.
Thank you. Council, you have any comments, reports?
I do. With the help of Jody, we've put together, no, we've just been kind of tasked to make sure that all council members, and especially that we have three new ones on the council this year, understand some of their responsibilities, and where we would like them to help out with Roy Days this year. So Roy Days again is July twenty-eighth through August fourth. Our theme is Military Strong. It will be, we're hoping in conjunction with our military-themed George Wallen Park. So I have, just for each of you, just kind of some times and dates and the functions and where we would like your help and support.
Thank you.
So you can each have one of those.
Okay, excellent.
I'll put it on the fridge.
Put it on your fridge, kay.
Okay, council, any, any other comments, thoughts? Okay, I just got a couple of-
Will you send me a copy, that, Carleen?
Yeah, you want it emailed?
Yes, please.
Or you can just set it in box.
I just want to say, I just want to say I'm grateful to the council tonight, we come together, we made some collaborative decisions, they weren't easy. I think we listened a lot to the residents, and I think we did what was best for the city, and, and that's what it's all about, is at the end of the day, we can come together, put our differences aside, and make the best decisions for all parties. What a great effort tonight. It's a pleasure to be with, not be with you, because I'm not there, but it's a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you. Let me just cover a couple of things if I can. First thing is, is that I received an email, I think council also did, some people in the residents believe that the intent to this last budget is to close the complex down. For the record, okay, not sure where that came from, but for the record, and if you'll make sure it's in the notes, Morgan, there was nothing in the budget to close the complex down, and so that's just a little misinformation. Last thing, if you can help me, Steve, you might have an answer. This is just one little follow-up, but the, there was a discussion about site plan requirement on food trucks. Did we come up with a solution with that, so that they can work that now?
We did, and all, all we need to do is just prepare an ordinance on that for you, just a simple change.
Just a minor change, so you guys will be prepared to-
I think you, you suggested some language to change on that, as I recall.
Yeah, but I, but we haven't seen anything official, and what I wanted to make sure that we just knew exactly where you are in that process.
We just got to put the paperwork together.
Okay, perfect. Okay?
Does that mean no food trucks at the July sixth event?
No, I, we'd have to, ordinance, right, and I encourage everybody, hurry down before eight, because down there at Davis Hospital have a food truck thing, I saw it last week, and, I mean, two weeks ago, they're doing it again, so.
Every Tuesday?
Yep.
It's a big event. But, to be compliant, they had to define that, and I think it says, this is our site plan, this is where we're doing it, and, and the debate was-
Yeah, we didn't want it to say a site plan, we needed drawing, we, we don't need it detailed as a site plan for food trucks.
Right.
And that's the-
Just making it nice, but also make it so where they can come and do their business.
Yeah.
Yes.
Really make it easy for them. The site plan was a little more formalized than it needed to be, and I think they have a solution there. Okay, perfect. Okay, having said all of that, council, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So this isn't, so this isn't the entire agenda, so you'll be getting this, this is just where we need council and mayor to be able to come and participate, where we need you. This isn't the entire agenda for Roy Days. I can get you that if you want, so every day it shows exactly what we're having. Okay, there will be the big newsletter, colored, four-page thing going out, that will have all the events and everything, you know, for Roy Days. This is just where we need council members.
Just one thing, Mayor, we had a movie night Saturday night, it was a good turnout. Councilmember Saxton had a good point, we, we used to do this, we had it, just to make sure we put up the A-frames around town and say movie night, and also the banner across the fence, say tonight's movie night. Good?
Is that okay? That's a good point.
Okay, excellent. Anything else, council, before we go for a motion to adjourn? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't hear that? Okay, we've just adjourned the city council meeting, we're now going to jump into the Roy City RDA meeting. Okay, let's go ahead and we'll jump into that one. Counsel, um- I'm sorry? We're going to go into that right now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the discussion.
All right, good.
Okay, so we're going to open up the Roy City RDA meeting. Again, the same council members as well as the mayor. Part of the action items, first we had to have a public hearing, so like to have a motion to open up a public hearing to, to consider the RDA resolution eighteen-dash-one. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, got it? We're now in a public hearing. Need someone, Jason, are you prepared to talk, or Randy, are we prepared to discuss that?
Yeah, I think both Randy and I can tackle this. So, really, the RDA is really self-explanatory, it's pretty simple, much more simpler than the last one. We did have some discussions on tax increments and hiring an economic development director. I think we're all kind of under the standing maybe not to do that, and to- I think we're all kind of under the standing maybe not to do that, and to, I mean, we have a good, um, RDA specialist that's helping us, we do have a lot of good movement. So, I mean, other than that, just in the line items, that's where you see the money, so I'm not sure what else.
Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, anybody have public comments on the RDA budget? Okay? Name and?
Yeah, Randy Scadon, forty-four thirty-three south, eighteen hundred west. What is, because I've heard a rumor that we have two million dollars sitting in the RDA fund, is that a true statement?
It's approximately two million dollars, that's correct.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
For the purposes of redevelopment.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Do you want to talk, Mr. Satt?
No, I just wanted to make the statement that there are some line items in here. We have appropriated the entire fund balance for use with projects. If by some reason we do not appropriate or use all of that expended, it'll flow back into the pub, fund balance at the end of year. We have included three hundred thousand dollars in for a revolving loan fund. One thing I would recommend is if we, if you approve the budget with that, we prove it with the caveat that we will not lend that until we come back to the board with the discussion with guidelines?
Agreement.
And all of the stuff in place. That may take us a little while, but I just want to make sure that we understand what we've appropriated it. We do need to come back and have some discussion about it.
Okay, good comment.
Yep, agreed.
Okay, any other comments?
I have a question.
Okay, well, let's, like, close the public hearing, then we'll have the council make comments. Uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close public hearing?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Tried to beat him. Okay, we're out of public hearing. Council, conversation, comments on the RDA budget?
Question. And the three hundred thousand dollars that we've set aside for the revolving loan fund, businesses within the city, competition for some of that money, as, as well as businesses out of the city that want to come here?
We'll need to come back and have a conversation about that, and the reason I'm saying that is because I think one of the priorities that the board has got to make is, what is that? Should we give priority to those that are within the project area? And if we do, how much of that do we want to have available for that? And how much of that do we want to have outside? This money is fund balance, and under the redevelopment law, it indicates that fund balance is revenue of the agency, and it has to be spent in accordance with the law. The law does allow the redevelopment agency to set up and loan their funds. Uh, and, uh, it does not specifically say that the, the fund balance has to be spent within a redevelopment project area. However, my advice to the board would be, this is money that was generated within the project area, and we should give priority of the funding to the businesses within, within the project areas. However, if we get down to the end and we're not making too many loans, and we have some business that comes outside of the project area that really provides a great economic benefit? We can come back, we can pass a resolution and allow you to spend that money outside. So it's a long answer to your question.
No, but I, I like that.
No, I, but that, again, I, I.
Agreed.
Do you know, Randy, one last question. Do you know Randy, has Roy ever attempted to do a three hundred thousand dollar revolving loan fund?
No, I don't believe that in all of the years that I've been involved, one or the other, have we ever tried to, to do that. Now, with that being said, we've had businesses that have located within a redevelopment project area that we have provided funding to, but not through a formal loan process where we're trying to set a program up that would just continue to fund itself so that we'd always have that money to, to lend out in the future.
Yeah, like a perpetual fund.
Correct, a perpetual loan fund, correct.
Okay.
That warms my heart to hear that, because that means we are thinking out of the box.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments, council, or, excuse me, board? Got to get the right group here. Okay, hearing none?
Mayor, can I make this?
Please.
So, I still want to go buy property, I really do, and Randy, Randy probably hates it when I say that, but if we have tax increments coming, and we're not going to use it for an economic director position to pay for the salary, why can't we go get a bond or a loan, go buy some property, and start redeveloping it, you know, kind of like Ogden City? I know it's a little different, but I'd, I'd like to go buy property, and I got three properties right now that I'd like to go buy.
Well, I want to know why Randy doesn't think the idea's a good idea.
He probably does, but?
Oh, he does, he just wasn't want to?
I, I, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Okay.
I, I, but I?
I just wanted your opinion.
But, but I think what we really need to do?
And give it to us straight, Mr. Satt.
Is we need to come back and have a discussion about how is the best way to use these funds that will promote the economic development of the community? And there's many things there. This is the sad thing. In five years, you have no more tax increment. You're done. Which means you've got to start thinking about, how are we going to fund economic development in the future? While I was outside, I listened to the mayor make a, think a, kind of the comprehensive financial plan of the city, and it wasn't very bright, in the sense that if you have demands and you have limited flat revenue, and you add another thing on top of that with economic development, it only com, complex, makes it more complex of the decisions that you have to make. So one of the things I would highly recommend we do, we've got money, we're setting on a million dollars that we have budgeted, and it can be used under the law for the purchase of property. And it doesn't have to be used for purchase of property within a redevelopment area. We can use it with the intent that we buy that, and then we can create a redevelopment project area, yet to take the best benefit with that.
Could we use it to buy property for a cemetery?
No. Unfortunately, you couldn't do that, because that is a public use.
Then can we take RDA money and loan it to the city, for the city to buy property for a cemetery?
No, it's a public use. We got to be very careful, the only public use is we're allowed to use for is the infrastructure development and development of, uh, of those types of things that benefit us from an economic development standpoint. What we should be doing with this money is, again, we need to look at return on investment. We need to use this money to create revenue going forward. That's, that's why the inter, the, the inter-local agreement we're adopting, that you approved as a city council, and we have before you the next item, is the redevelopment agency is going to become your economic development arm, and we want them to develop economic development and revenue. That's the whole reason. And buying a cemetery doesn't give us a lot of revenue.
Yeah, and, and I think echoing that comment, and, and I think Councilman Yeoman, you brought up a really good point. I, I think the real strategy we want to do here, to meet the needs of the city manager's point would be is, if we can get into a partnership as an RDA agency, and maybe in a partnership, we acquire the property, and with that, we become the landowner, and a business says, I'm ready now to bed down a business on top of that, then we have some opportunities to really start to get a return on investment on that property. But, but don't misunderstand what I'm about to tell you, but it's true. Embedded at the airport in, in this city, okay, Roy has a sizable piece of property in that airport that is in Roy City. The tune of a couple, I think it's about a million eight, I think is the land value for that airport. Because Ogden City owns that property, Roy City doesn't get a dime of any revenue off of that property taxes, even though it's in Roy City, and even though, in fact, unfortunately, in this case, it's owned by Ogden City. So the key here would be is, so that we don't become a detriment to drawing in revenue. If the city purchases property, it's off the tax rolls, okay? But if we can be a partner with the business that says, let's take an acre, two acres of property, or the sizable acres that we're working with, and says, Roy, this particular RDA agency, purchase that property in concert with a developer that comes in, and they put in a business, we become the principal landowner, the business essence builds an industry, we get not only some, we'll get lots of revenue, if nothing else, but sales tax. That's the relationship I think the RDA can make some big business. Or we just, or at some point in time in that agreement, maybe we just sell the property back to the company that's got that, that building on it. But we need that companionship of business coming in on top of this city acquiring the property. And I think we can do that for you, Jason, that's the strategy.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I thought and ideas, there's some complications that come around, but another reality is, if the city buys it, you have say what goes into it. Right now, you have no say. If it's a permitted use, that, any use that's permitted can come in. So that's, that's another positive, if the city owned the land, you have control of what does or doesn't go in there.
Exactly, yeah, and that's a powerful statement.
And I think the key thing is, we want to talk about how to leverage our, our, our dollars, and, uh, because they're very limited, there's very few, but no, I'm not opposed to the idea of purchasing property. I think we need to come back, though, and have a conversation about, where do we want to strategically move our economic development forward? What are our priorities and goals, and then act accordingly?
Sounds like we probably want to do that, I mean, these properties are not going to last forever. Um, you don't be up for sale, and so we probably want to have this conversation.
And some of them are right now.
That's the problem.
Yeah, so I think we need to have this conversation earlier than later.
So maybe we can make this package deal tonight, and then tomorrow, I can go spend a million dollars and buy property.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, now, having said that, thank you. Um, okay, so I think in reference to the conversation, uh, just so we clarify this, I think what's on the table, uh, would be is, is if the council will approve, excuse me, if the board will approve resolution eighteen one, uh, that we need to caveat that with the requirement the RDA board have established guidelines and the funding approval, okay? Uh, that takes place in concert with that budget, and, and I think that's appropriate anyway.
Based on the revolving loan fund?
Only on the revolving loan fund, okay?
Is it proper word in just saying, any, any loan application must come before the board?
Has come before the board, okay. So do I have a motion then to, uh, to approve resolution eighteen dash one, adopting?
We got to go out of public hearing first, Mayor.
Didn't I go out of?
I, I thought we did.
Did we do that?
Yeah, because we, council discussion.
I think tonight's been a record for public hearing, for Saturday night.
Okay.
I'm trying to keep track, too. Um, okay, do I have a motion then to approve RDA resolution eighteen dash one, adopting the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen physical budget, beginning July first, two thousand eighteen, ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen? Uh, to, walk me through this one, Andy. And with that, we caveat that to, that the revolving loan fund requires RDA board guidelines and funding approval.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved?
I like that one.
Because I'm like, I don't want to repeat that.
Second.
Okay.
I don't either.
Thank you, and this is a roll call vote?
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Excuse me, excuse me, board member?
I'm sorry, board member?
Yes.
You're correct.
Yeah, RDA board.
Board member Yeoman?
Aye.
Board member Paul?
Aye.
Board member Tafoya?
Aye.
Okay.
Board member Burrell?
Aye.
Board member Saxon?
Aye.
Count, uh, motion three?
Thank you, okay, and now we have consideration for RDA resolution eighteen two. And the inter-local agreement between Roy City and the Roy City Redevelopment Agency. Do we have any comments on that?
No.
We okay?
Yeah, Mayor, go ahead and make a motion that we approve resolution number eighteen dash two, the inter-local agreement between Roy City and the RDA agency.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Resolution, sorry, RDA, RDA resolution number eighteen dash two.
Second.
Thank you.
Get the RDA in there.
This is a roll call vo, vote?
Councilmember Paul?
Board member?
Board member?
Aye.
It's okay, it's all good.